Called meeting order. Our only agenda is items from the public. But the record show there's nobody here from the public to speak.
John, that was your chance.
Motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion been properly moved in second, all in favor? Mr. Hess, board review equalization. The Honorable Larry Hesse, assessor for review and equalization, session number three.
Don't have anything today, right now. Got a couple in the works. And I think Doc's got a couple presidential he's got to work with. We may have something Thursday. I did get an interesting email from the Office of Tax Appeals in Charleston. Just got it today, I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. It's, you know, the designers say they have a right to appeal to the Office of Tax Appeals if they received an increase letter within eight days. So they made applications Charleston. They got a letter of increase on the sixteenth, they made an application. And they've got these dates all set up on this stuff. I think we can take care of that before it goes anywhere. Because they bought this house, paid $370,000 for it in February last year. And we raised the values up because of the subdivision values, but we only had $308,000 on the front. While they would even appeal it, people went up. I don't think they got a way to save money. We'll probably take care of that before it even gets anywhere else. Other than that, we have nothing else right now, we'll just be on standby.
Now, is that appeal to the state, is that the final appeal?
No, it's, this is the first time we've ever done these withdrawals. They just set that up for the 23 tax year. And maybe Anthony could explain it better. But it's, as I understand it, you can make an appeal if you guys, basically, if they come here and you disagree, and they can appeal instead of going to a circuit court, now they've got this Office of Tax Appeals set up in Charleston. It kind of took the place of circuit court, in a way.
Or just one more step that they can maybe get resolved before it goes to circuit court.
They can go to circuit court after they go to the Office of Tax Appeals in Charleston.
Who's on this tax appeal board?
I think the judge, his name is Molek or Pollak. Pollak? I don't know any person, I mean, just.
So it's a one person?
No, they have, I'll let Anthony maybe get into the legal stuff.
I haven't seen what was sent to them. My reading is that any taxpayer has to come here first to contest an assessment before appealing to Charleston. I'll have to go make sure that's correct. This appeal to the Office of Tax Appeals, so yeah, it would go before an administrative law judge, Judge Pollak. And it would just be a telephonic hearing. But I think they have to appeal here first. So that takes, it's going there instead of then coming back in October here and having a word with us. So they can come here and contest. I'll look into this. Person wants to contest.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like there's timelines that have to be met. And I don't know how they document those timelines of when they received it versus having the time, so.
I think we'll be able to take care of this with our phone call. Call them, the way the values are, they have late payment. So they have timeline, they already have dates set up for a hearing, a conference, unconference. But because they put it from that, they've got a final date for a hearing. If it gets to that part, it's like February 28th. Like, hell, man, I don't want to run to Charleston February 28th, I've got certification.
Yes, you do.
And, you know, I don't know where they even come up with this thing to run to Charleston. If it gets to that, I don't know if they still get to that. I'm going to send a copy too, and they will check that out. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. No commercial?
No. Nothing right now. We may have a couple where it's going to be, but right now, we'll be on standby.
I have the agenda posted, if you want to see the times that I left on trip schedules.
Oh, yeah.
The drops.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all. Okay, we'll be hanging up, getting there.
Let's just take a about a 10 minute recess until Nick arrives. All right. Nick, you ready to go?
Yes, sir.
There you go. Actually, ladies and gentlemen, we got a next deal with the executive director of the Eastern Regional Airport.
I will.
How you doing?
Great, how are you doing? Well, very much for having me. You're welcome. Head and seat you up there. Oh, yeah. Jim, how you doing?
All yours.
All right, well, I am, I'm requesting $250,000. That's lower than last year, and we're participating, continuing to decrease that funding request. We are, I don't know if we're the only, but we're probably one of the few agencies that you fund that actually has a pretty significant economic impact on your, on the county here. We have about a $340 million impact annually. And we think that'll probably continue to grow as we bring in more business and as we attract, attract new development at the airport. The, this past year has been a year of stabilization, a little bit of growth. We went from, we went from a budget many, many years ago of, I say many, it's like four years ago, we had a budget of about $360,000, $370,000 a year. And now our budget's about $3.4 million. And of course, with that comes some additional expense. But one of the things we've been working toward, and we are making some progress, is to try to be less dependent on county and state and local government. We recognize that there'll always be a, some level of dependency just because of the nature of the, of the organization. But that being said, we are, we have been making some progress to continue to reduce that, that request. We are, we just ran out of jet A this morning, which is actually kind of a nice problem to have. We sold so much fuel yesterday that we had to bring an order in a week early. So we're continuing to see, we got our, our fuel sales from four years ago are up about 40%. And I've had a hard time breaking through that 40% mark, though. I'd like to, I'd like to say that they're up by 50%, but I can't, I haven't been able to get above 40, so.
Is it because it's such a deal at Martinsburg, or is there some other reason that?
Well, I'm the best deal at Martinsburg, but the fuel is not, the fuel's not bad either. The, we happen to be in, in an area where we get a lot of stops. So, and what we did about three years ago when we purchased the FBO is I switched fuel providers to Avfuel. Avfuel is a, it's the largest fuel provider for, well, largest aviation fuel provider in the country. And the way that, that aviation fuel works, it's kind of like, I don't know if you all remember when, when you were younger and your dad pulled up to a gas station, he's like, okay, which gas station am I at? Everybody had, you had an Exxon card and a Texaco card and all these other cards. Well, the aviation fuel industry is still like that. And so when you go to an airport, you look to see who the fuel provider is, because everybody has contracts with those large fuel providers. And it just so happens that Avfuel, because they're the largest, they happen to have more contracts. They have like five times the number of contracts that the previous fuel provider had. And because of that, a, excuse me, a, an aircraft that historically might not have come, might not have come to our airport, now will come there. So we're seeing a lot of NetJets, and we're seeing a lot of corporate aircraft come through just for fuel stops that we had never seen before. And the nice part of that is that when we have that activity, and those guys go elsewhere, and they have a good experience, they talk to other people about it, and we continue to get more activity. And one of the things that we recognized early on was that we were getting very, very little, virtually no military traffic. And so we did a few things. First, we reached out to military bases throughout the country and said, hey, we would love to have you come here. And we, you know, and we do things like make sure we have snacks for the guys when they, when they land there. Make sure we have sodas and waters and, well, I mean, sometimes we'll go so far, if we know there's a group there and they're going to be there for a couple of hours, you know, we'll go buy them pizzas or send them upstairs for lunch or whatever, just to make sure we're treating them well. And because of that, they like to stop at our airport. And so yesterday and the day before, we had quite a bit of military traffic. We had, on Saturday, we had nine.
I don't know any person, I mean just.
So it's a one person?
No, they have, I'll let Anthony.
I haven't seen what was sent to them. My reading is that the taxpayer has to come here first to contest an assessment before appealing Charleston. I'll have to go make sure that's correct. This appeal to the Office of Act Appeals. So yeah, it would go before an administrative law judge. Judge Pollock. And it would just be a telephonic hearing. But I think they have to appeal here first. So that takes. It's going there instead of then coming back in October here and having a word. So that's. So somebody can come here and contest. I'll look into this. Person wants to contest.
Yeah, I mean it sounds like there's timelines that have to be met.
Yeah, there are.
And I don't know how they document those timelines of when they received it versus having the time, so.
I think we'll be able to take care of this with our phone call. Call them and it's the way the ratings are. So they have timeline, they already have dates set up for a hearing, a conference, unconference. But because they put it from that, they've got a final date for a hearing if it gets that far. It's like February 28th. Like, hell, man, I don't want to run to Charleston February 28th. I've got certification.
Yes, you do.
And, you know, I don't know where they even come up with this thing to run to Charleston. If it gets to that, I will at least go get to that. I'm going to send a copy too. And they will check it out. I just wanted to mention.
Thank you. No commercial.
No. Nothing right now. We may have a couple of words to be, but right now we'll be able to stay.
I have each other posted if you want to see the times that I left on trip of those.
Oh, yeah.
The drops.
Yeah.
Very close.
Yeah. Yeah, so. Okay, we'll be hanging up and getting anything.
Let's just take a about a 10 minute recess until Nick arrives. All right. Nick, you ready to go?
Yes, sir.
There you go. Actually, ladies and gentlemen, we've got a next deal with the executive director of the Eastern Regional Airport.
I will.
How you doing?
Great. How are you doing? Well, very much for having me. You're welcome. Thank you. Head and seat you up there. Oh, yeah. Jim, how you doing?
All right.
All yours.
All right, well, I am, I'm requesting $250,000. That's lower than last year. And we're participating, continuing to decrease that funding request. We are, I don't know if we're the only, but we're probably one of the few agencies that you that you fund that actually has a pretty significant economic impact on your, on the county here. We have about a $340 million impact annually. And we think that'll probably continue to grow as we bring in more business and as we attract, attract new development at the airport. The, um, this past year has been a year of stabilization, a little bit of growth. We went from, uh, we went from a budget many, many years ago of, I say many, it's like four years ago. Got a budget of about $360,000, $370,000 a year. And now our budget's about 3.4 million. And of course with that comes some additional expense. But one of the things we've been working toward, and we are making some progress, is to try to be less dependent on, on county and state and local government. We recognize that there'll always be a, some level of dependencies because of the nature of the, of the organization. But that being said, um, we are, um, we have been making some progress to continue to, to reduce that, that request. We are, um, we just ran out of, uh, of Jet A this morning, which is actually kind of a nice problem to have. We sold so much fuel, uh, yesterday that we had to bring an order in a week early. So, so we're continuing to see, we got our, our fuel sales from four years ago are up about 40%. And, uh, I've had a hard time breaking through that 40% mark though. I'd like to, I'd like to say that they're up by 50%, but I can't, I haven't been able to get above 40, so.
Because it's such a deal at Martinsburg or is there some other reason that?
Well, I'm the best deal at Martinsburg, but the fuel is not, the fuel's not bad either. The, uh, we happen to be in, in a, an area where we get a lot of stops. So, um, and, and what we did, uh, about three years ago when we purchased the FBO is I switched fuel providers to Avfuel. Avfuel is a, it's the largest fuel provider for, uh, for, uh, but largest aviation fuel provider in the country. And the way that, that aviation fuel works is kind of like, I don't know if you all remember when, when you were younger and your, your dad pulled up to a gas station, he's like, okay, which gas station am I at? Everybody had, you had an Exxon card and a Texaco card and all these other cards. Well, the aviation fuel industry is still like that. And so when you go to an airport, you look to see who the fuel provider is because everybody has contracts with those large fuel providers and it just so happens that Avfuel, because they're the largest, they happen to have more contracts. They have like five times the number of contracts that the previous fuel provider had. And because of that, a, excuse me, a, an aircraft that historically might not have come, might not have come to our airport, now will come there. So we're seeing a lot of NetJets and we're seeing a lot of corporate aircraft come through just for fuel stops that we had never seen before. And the nice part of that is that when we have that activity and those guys go elsewhere and they have a good experience, they talk to other people about it, and we continue to get more activity. And one of the things that we recognized early on was that we were getting very, very little, virtually no military traffic. And so we did a few things. First, we reached out to military bases throughout the country and said, hey, we would love to have you come here. And we, uh, you know, and we do things like make sure we have snacks for the guys when they, when they land there. Make sure we have sodas and waters and, um, well, I mean, sometimes we'll go so far if we know there's a group there and they're going to be there for a couple of hours, you know, we'll go buy pizzas or, or send them upstairs for lunch or whatever, just to make sure we're treating them well. And because of that, they like to stop at our airport. And so, um, yesterday and the day before, we had quite a bit of military traffic. We had, uh, on Saturday, we had nine helicopters stopped there. We had, um, some, gosh, we had, uh, some, um, Black Hawks and some Cobras and some others.
They all fueled up?
They said they were going to buy 700 gallons. They lied to us. They bought 2,500 gallons. So we're okay with that kind of lie. It was a nice, it was a nice stop, let's just say. And, uh, and this morning we had a, a mid-sized jet come in that we weren't expecting and they pretty much took the rest. So we, luckily, our fuel provider has trucks in the general areas. You're able to reload later in the morning. But, uh, those are some, the sums of. What?
What's your capacity?
Right now, we're only able to handle about 8,000 gallons at the top. And that's something, and we've got, we have two 8,000 gallon tanks and it's kind of frustrating because our avgas, which we don't sell as much of because they're for smaller airplanes usually, that is also an 8,000 gallon tank. And I could probably go two to three times as long to fuel that as I do with this Jet A tank. One of these days, I want to get another big tank, like maybe a 10, 15,000 gallon tank. But that's, that's, uh, I got to bring in some, some bigger business first. So we're, we're working on, uh, doing some, uh, we're working on some air cargo. We've got some, uh, we've got some irons in the fire there. We're trying to bring in, it's, and we already know, I mean, we've been through this several times now. We went to, uh, went to a couple of conferences to hear and understand more about how air cargo works. Problem is, and I already knew this coming into the job, that the manufacturers that are in this area are not here because they've got, we got an airport that they can, they can utilize for flying their product. They're here because they're within a day's drive of their customer. And so most of these large manufacturers would never use air cargo for anything. And so we have to really grow our own. And so we've been talking to some industry that is, uh, that utilizes air cargo. And, uh, we're, we're hoping to be able to ultimately secure some, some business that not only might be based at the airport, and if not at the airport, somewhere in, in the industrial park, some of the property owned by VCDA or others in that general vicinity, but also that'll utilize air cargo on a regular basis. So that's, that's what we're working on now. It's, uh, it's a slow process and it's going to take some time, but we're, we are continuing to, to push on that front.
I know Candy and I were out at the restaurant last week on a real pretty day. And man, there were, there were small planes coming in everywhere. They just basically, you know, come in to have lunch and, and fly out, but they get fuel. Yeah.
It has been.
Fuel trucks were busy.
Yeah, yeah, and they, they, on those pretty days, they definitely are. It's, um, I would love it if we were like that every day. Of course, on, that's the, the frustrating part is on real windy days, we're not seeing as much traffic as we would if we, if we just had larger aircraft there. We're still seeing the C-17s take, take off and land. Some other large jets still come in and out, but it's heavy winds like it was on May or Friday. We had some pretty heavy winds. We saw very little, it's a pretty day otherwise, but you saw very little activity just because winds are just too much for local pilots. But it's, uh, yeah, we've been really, so we are now the second busiest airport in West Virginia. You've got, um, our operations, so an operation is anytime an airplane lands or takes off, it's called an operation in the FAA world. And, um, so we have, Morgantown has the most operations and we are number two right now. So, and only about 10% of that is military and government aircraft. All the rest is, is private aircraft. We're proud of that number. We'll, we'll hold that up against any commercial airport in state.
So. So great. You guys looking to do any commercial flights out of there?
You know, we have analyzed that a few times and the problem that we've got is there are 12 commercial airports within 90 miles of us. And when we started looking at, at what we need to do to do that, and I looked, of course, at Hagerstown, we used to have daily service and they lost it because they weren't able to keep up those numbers. And the city and the county there with millions and millions and millions of dollars in trying to keep that commercial service just couldn't do it. And so they do have seasonal services, which is what you see now, like flying to and from Florida and Myrtle Beach and stuff like that. I do think there will ultimately be commercial service at our airport, but that probably not going to be in my lifetime.
I just knew that there's a little bit out of Charleston, West Virginia.
Yeah, so yeah, there. So Charleston is, and I forgot the terminology for this. The FAA calls it a, a, like a transportation desert because there's no other big airports within a certain number of miles from it. And so they provide Charleston, Beckley, uh, Lewisburg and Bridgeport. All of those get a whole bunch of federal money just to operate because they meet that classification. It's kind of frustrating for me because I look at, and, and I can say this because I'm from Beckley, but I look at Beckley and I look at Charleston, there's only 50 minute drive between the two. And so I don't understand why both of those get funded the way they do. And then you also got Lewisburg, which is again, you know, another 50 minutes from Beckley. And it doesn't make any sense to me rationally why those should be funded, but we, we could not receive those types of funds. But it's, you know, just is how it is in that business. So, um, they, yeah, they, they're, and there's also commercial service out of Huntington, but they're, they do have the number of, of passengers to continue to keep theirs up. And then, um, Morgantown also has the commercial service, but it's the same way. It's, it's a busy airport and most of Morgantown's flights are due from Pittsburgh all day long, just back and forth. But they make, they have enough frequency and enough passengers that they can make that happen.
At one point, the daily flights out of Hagerstown, they were, they were heavily subsidized by the feds. And they had to fly regardless of whether they had anyone on the aircraft or not. So there were actually instances where the aircraft was flying with nobody on board except the crew. So that's essentially the duty of funding.
Yeah, and it's, it's frustrating because you're like, gosh, because it is so much noise. Why at Hagerstown? But they, they just could not. But the other problem that we have is we actually did talk to some commercial service and the places that they would go and the amount of money they would charge to fly out of here is ridiculous.
Well, flights are ridiculous now.
Well, that's true. That's very true. I flew to Chicago a couple of months ago and I used to fly to and from Chicago all the time for 200 bucks and that, I think like $180.
Southwest usually have cheap flights, but I guess they ran into this problem they had recently and their flights are through the roof too.
Yeah.
Yeah, just this week, I was looking to fly out of Vegas and back and it was $900.
Vegas used to be another cheap flight.
I know. It was like 68 bucks each way or something, you know, but now it's not. I mean, um, I think in Spirit and those guys, they have those cheap flights, but now they're, they're double taxing you after that. They're charging you for your seat. They're charging you for your luggage and your carry-on. So you get, if you get a carry-on and a suitcase, you've got that, those two charges plus pick your seat and you have to pick your seat.
And so by then you're probably paying as much as United or American?
Yeah, they, they just hidden it in side pieces.
But we do have charter service, so you guys want to charter something somewhere?
What's that one approximately?
Well, it's a little bit more expensive than Spirit. It, it, it is very expensive, but it's.
See, you could charter a party plane to Las Vegas.
That's right.
I'm also that.
We do have to do a fuel stop on Long Way, but. Yeah, we're.
How big are the charter planes that go out of there?
Um, we've got, we have one that, that we own and it's a King Air 200 and it seats 10 people. Now, if it were full of 10 people, it'd be, it'd take multiple stops to get to Vegas. That's the other side.
Florida or Myrtle Beach or something?
Yeah, and we go to like Florida, Myrtle Beach, places like that pretty frequently. It's, um, and we'll usually tip, the typical group that flies is between four and six people. And usually you're looking at some, somewhere in the neighborhood of like 22, 23 hundred bucks an hour. And, and, and we have to have 30 minutes ahead of time, 30 minutes after we get back. It's billed in, so you automatically have an hour checked on, plus your, your time in the air. So if you're, if you were going to fly down to Myrtle Beach, for example, I think last time we visited, we had Myrtle. This was one way because they're staying for a week. But one way it was 800 bucks.
Yeah, it's pretty expensive.
Now, you do get free soda and water. You get your own soda. You don't pour it like in a cup. You get the whole thing to yourself.
Well, that makes it a deal.
Well, tell them, I'm, I'm curious, what you, $250,000, how do you intend to spend it? Are you, have it allocated for something?
Yeah, we have allocated for a few things and I actually brought my, my larger thing with me. And, and just for, and for, uh, full transparency here, we had originally, we, we were trying to figure out some way to be able to purchase another, so we have two planes that we use for our flight school. And those two planes we use for our flight school are both very old, uh, very old, um, 172s. And I think one of them's a 1978, 1979 aircraft. And we are, we're losing flight school customers because they can go to Hagerstown or Winchester or Frederick and get much newer aircraft or aircraft that have more instrumentation or they, they might be, um, a larger aircraft, so you can get a different certification in those. And so we were trying to figure out some way to do that. And we calculated out, if we could do that, we would generate more revenue with the flight school enough that we could, we could lower this number a little more, but we're, we, we weren't able to quite get all that together. And so that's, um, that's something that we're still looking at and trying to figure out. We're actually, uh, going to be talking about in the near future. If, if we sell some of our property south of Novak, we're thinking about taking some of that money and investing it in another, at least one other aircraft so we can, so we can generate enough revenue to, to reduce it a little more. But we use it primarily, we use it for operations, for airfield maintenance and for, um, sometimes we use it for outreach, but, but more than anything else, we're using it to support the, the, uh, cost centers at the airport that are actually generating revenue. Because in doing that, we have a better idea of how much we're generating and whether or not we can reduce that, that request in the years to come. We also, on occasion, will use some of it for a, for matching money if we get a federal grant. So the FAA typically funds us for projects at 90%, but we have to have a 10% match. And sometimes we have a project that's a couple hundred grand and so we can utilize some of that funding for that. We are working on a project right now that's going to be about 30 million. And so 10% of that's a little bit more to bite off, so we got to, we're trying to stretch that out over several years. What, what we're trying to do there is, um, we have, if you're familiar with the airport, you got the runway and then you got taxiway Alpha, which is the one over by the guard. And it runs the full length of the runway. Well, the FAA determined we didn't need one that ran the full length of the runway back when they built taxiway Echo, which is a taxiway that's perfectly fine for small aircraft. But like we now have a G5 that lives at the airport and that G5 can't use taxiway Echo. And taxiway Echo only goes, and so you got, the, the runway itself is 9615 feet long. And taxiway Echo goes kind of down the middle third of the runway. So you've got a bunch of space over here and a bunch of space over here. So anybody that uses that, they have to, once they get out on the runway, they have to back taxi to go down to the end of the runway. And so what we want to do is, we want, we don't need to lengthen it on both sides for, for what we're looking at, but we do need to lengthen it a little bit on one side and down to the end on the other side. Um, so that we can not only accommodate the G5 that's there, but if we're doing, if we get a cargo project, we'll be able to accommodate those aircraft as well. But the, um, that, that project is going to have to be a multi-year because, you know, we nor, nor the county, nor anybody else has got 3 million bucks they're going to be able to throw down on a project like this. And we're fully aware of that. So we wouldn't use the match for that, but we would use the match for smaller projects. Like if we're doing a, um, a project where we're patching something or, or, um, like we, we are constantly in tree removal mode where we're having to get trees out of the way there. And when we do that, sometime, if it's, if it's just a few trees, we will go take them out ourselves. But, or if it's, you know, if we find somebody that, uh, that is licensed to do that and they're willing to give us a deal and we won't use federal money for that because we'd rather use the federal money for their projects. But we're working now on a proposal to take out a whole bunch of trees in one of the areas. Because there again, the problem, it's going to be, uh, probably 150 grand to get all those out of there. So we would use, um, if we get that grant, we would use some of this money as an action.
Well, I guess with, with trees also comes, uh, wild game and those kinds of things that's going to create a catastrophe on an airfield.
And that's, and that's part of the problem is that you have a tree and you have trees up close to the fence and there happens to be a hole in the fence there. Then you get wild animals that congregate in that area, you know, if they can get up under that fence, they will. I mean, this past year though, we only shot about 45 deer on the field, which is less than we have shot historically. Usually it's 60, 70 deer that we get every year out there. We do have, uh, the USDA, uh, is full-time on the fields. All they do is go through, they'll shoot deer, they'll, uh, you know, also shoot like, you know, you have a wolf or a fox or something. They'll take that out too. They capture, uh, birds of prey like, like hawks and like, um, even the vultures that come over from Asroff or, uh, Argos. They will capture those and relocate them far away from here. And so even with all of that, it's just a constant struggle to make sure that you don't have, and then we have, you have some pilots and even though they're pilots and they know better, they will see a stray cat and put something, some food out for it, which means suddenly you got a cat population that can't eat it. So we, we don't shoot them, but we do try to capture any taken to, uh, relocate them as well. So there's, that, but those are all issues that you have when you have trees close to your, close to your airport or in the fence line.
Nick, I see in your budget proposal for next year, you're asking for 250 from the county and 100 from the city of Martinsburg.
Yes, sir.
I guess you've given up one Jefferson County.
I, uh.
This is the Eastern West Virginia region airport.
I have had lengthy discussions with their county commissioners about how probably a third of the aircraft at our airport are, uh, are there, uh, from people who live in Jefferson County and a lot of their businesses utilize our airport. Jokingly, obviously. I told the, the new president of their county commission, I said, I'll tell you what. Anytime somebody comes in, lands here, it's got to go to their business over in Jefferson County. We're going to ask them to just go on up to Hagerstown and then they can drive over from there since you guys don't want to have anything to do with our airport. And I'll let them know why, that we obviously would never do that. But it is very, very frustrating. We have the same issue to a smaller degree with the county even more to our, to our west. But, uh, it's, Jefferson County has been so hot and cold. When, when one county commission, one year says, yes, we will fund the position, it's a $5,000 per head. And, and we don't even, we ask for additional funding for, for field projects and for other things. We don't ever even get that. We get exactly $5,000. And then every time we've gotten the $5,000, we can just almost guarantee that they're not going to pay us the following year, which is what they have done three times now. And, uh, and then in some, in some instances, they will pay us again the year after that. Problem is, they don't tell their appointee when they don't pay it. And so we end up being the bad guy and tell their appointee, gee, I'm really sorry, but not only are you no longer on the airport authority, but the last four meetings you've attended, we're going to have to wipe you from all the meeting minutes because you weren't a member. So it's, uh, it's put us in an uncomfortable position twice. And, uh, yeah, we just say, no, for the, for the pain and suffering we deal with with all of that, we're just going to pretend like they're not there. So it's, uh, maybe one of these days we will, um, get some regular support. So it's maybe one of these days we will get some regular support, which would be very nice. For now, we are focused exclusively on serving the folks in Berkeley County and in Markersburg.
I know the council, this current fiscal year was very generous in providing you some additional support for the outdoor educational area.
Yes, sir.
As well as some seed money for the airshow and can you bring the council on those projects?
Yeah, I just did a presentation on that this morning and we did another one on Friday morning. I may just go to the chamber, uh, to the chamber breakfast. But the, we got a total of three hundred thousand dollars from the, from the county council. This past year, a hundred and seventy five of it went to A four phase one of our outdoor, of our, of our Steve Catlett Outdoor Educational Facility right there at the airport. And it's going to be a, it's going to be a nice, it's a plaything really for, for kids, but it's educational because it's all, has everything to do with aviation. So it's all shaped like airplanes and things like that. It's also, there are some explanations on there like how planes fly and there's a wing of an aircraft so it shows dynamics of how all that works. And so that's, that's phase one of this outdoor educational facility we're doing. Phase two is going to be a, we're going to build a pavilion out from another building that's already existing there. And we'll be able to, to not only host educational groups in the pavilion, but we're also building that's right beside it. It's an old building. It used to be the, it used to house all the, the lighting, the lighting box and the electric boxes. Where all the lights on the field. And that has not been in operation for many, many years. They've taken all the boxes out there. So it's really just a, primarily a big empty building. And it's not that big actually. It's a smaller building. But what we're going to do is punch out the, the back wall of that, put a great big window in there, have some seating in there for a classroom type environment so that we can have students come in and we can have various folks come in and talk to kids about aviation while they can actually see planes taking off right there from the field. And then phase, phase three will be another piece of equipment that's, it's more, it's another learning piece of equipment out there. But that's, that got us started with that facility. And I know Councilman Catlett helped Neil, who originally put that together many years ago to get this thing started. So we're excited to be able to continue this project and complete it hopefully. Our, our plan is to try to get it completed over the next six years. So we'll just see how, how we can do that. And then the, the other hundred twenty five thousand went toward our airshow. And we, this will be the first airshow on the civilian side of the field since two thousand eight. We are very excited to be able to put this together. We've got multiple acts booked already for this event. We have applied, we will be getting a jet act. We're just not sure which one yet. We've applied for several of them. And so what we, what we do have that we know of is we have a, of course, we have C seventeen s. We've got the C one thirties coming up from Charleston. We've got Skip Stewart, who is the, he's one of the most sought after civilian acts in the world. And he was at a show early on in his career, so he's excited to come back to Markersburg to perform for us. We have the Golden Knights, the Army Jump Team. And you were, weren't you a jumper back in the day? I thought I'd moved.
He's having knee surgery. He's. Yeah, that's, that's, that's for young men.
I don't, I couldn't do it at the beginning. So we're going to have, we're also going to have like, we're going to have a vampire jet, which is a jet that's got fifty cent on the back of it. And some other. Other acts, but that's.
I'm not going to have anybody from Southwest Airlines there.
No, sir. Shut that part down. So that's going to be, that's going to be a good show. It's August twenty sixth and twenty seventh. We anticipate there'll probably be twenty, thirty thousand people a day at that event. It'll be a great community activity. Frankly, would not have been possible for us to do that without the support of the county council. And we do think it's going to be a, it's going to be a, an event that will draw people from out of area to, to the county from all over. We, we know just from, from past airshows that about, a little over half of our attendees will be from outside of the county. So it's a great opportunity to showcase, showcase our county and it's a great opportunity for us to showcase the airport. But more than that, it's, it's a great opportunity to have an event that's a kid-friendly event, family-friendly event that'll have, you know, that'll have a lot of opportunity for kids to learn about aviation and for, for parents to just appreciate what we do have here in this county.
Is it a paid event?
So, yep, it's paid at the gate. You can either get on, get tickets online or at the gate. Those will go on sale on April first. The kids fifteen and under free with a paying donor. So we anticipate, we, we already know whether it's a, whether it's a free event or a paid event, the, when you come to airshows, about sixty five percent of the people that attend those bring their kids with them. And if it's in the younger age group, I think from thirty five to forty five, that number goes up to seventy five percent. And we also know that it's a more affluent crowd than, than a lot of other events. The average income, family income for attendees in airshows is about a hundred thousand dollars a year. And so it's a nice, it's a nice crowd to have. It'll be helpful to a lot of the businesses in our area to be able to attract some new business. And the other, the other positive to that is that people are there for a little over six hours. The average time of attendance in airshows is six, six hours and fifteen minutes. So people, when they come to those events, are there for a while. And so in that being said, I actually was going to send you this letter, but I'll, I'll just ask you now to think about what you would like as a council, might like to do at the airshow. And we can do it both days or just one day to really highlight some of the great things in the county. So it's a, we've got a platform. It's a huge audience and we would be happy to apply anything to it.
I know the Chamber has been advertising for corporate sponsors.
Correct.
I've seen a number of emails come across. Is there any, any kind of traction in your sponsors?
Yeah, we actually, we just booked our first sponsor, I think two or three weeks ago. And we've got three other sponsors that may have already signed up. I've got, I, you know, I will talk to folks about sponsoring, but I've got, we did actually bring in a professional to do sponsorship this year. I used to do all that myself and I just, I don't have the time. My job keeps pretty busy. I don't have the time that I used to. So I'll, I'll talk to some of the folks that have sponsored historically that I have a strong relationship with. We anticipate we're going to be bringing in, we're going to at least match what we brought in from the, what the county contributed in sponsorships. These events are not cheap. They're, this event will probably cost us a little over three hundred thousand dollars to, to put on. And the, it'll be, it'll be primarily through sponsorships and the contribution from the, from the county council. And one of the things I just challenged our, it was actually two guys just challenged our sponsorship guys with. I said, if you can bring in yourselves, I mean, it's going to happen to us. If you bring in yourselves two hundred and fifty grand, then we can consider doing another show in two years. I don't want to do one every year, but we'll see what the, we'll see what the community wants to do there. It's, we never wanted to do every year shows back when we started doing them in oh five just because, you know, it's, it's not really sustainable. It's just, you're, it's a lot of money and it's not fair to just suck all the air out of the room when it comes to hitting up your companies and businesses in the area for sponsorship when there are so many other events in Eastern Panhandle that are good events that could also utilize those sponsorship dollars. So, so that's one of the things we're, we're kind of toying with is see what the interest might be.
You've been working with CMC?
Yes, on the July first event.
So the council was aware, if you remember, CMC is part of their pilot agreement that you approved. Have annual quality of life payments with the first one beginning February twenty twenty three. They did reach out to us two weeks ago to see how to get the process started. And I know Anthony's been working with Mark Williamson and Nick to try to get, get that arranged. So they, they willingly stepped up to the plate and said, tell us what we need to do.
Good, sir. Matter of fact, we just, we're in the process of designing a, a.
Nick, can you reach out to the CVB for the airshow?
Actually, I just met with them yesterday. So they're going to, they're going to help us do some advertising for that. Of course, they used to have, through the state, they used to have some tourism dollars to advertise out of state. And that apparently is not, they resolved that program, but the CVB has got some other avenues for funding. They said they'd be happy to help with it and certainly we will do everything we can to work with them to make sure that while people are here, they're doing something besides just showing up to the airshow.
It'd be nice if they would sponsor like a canopy or, you know, on-site like we did in the airshow.
Right.
You know, different organizations, corporations, but the CVB I think would be a nice draw.
Yeah, because we actually talked to them about that a little bit yesterday. And the other thing that, that I mentioned to them, and I don't know, this is, all of these are a lot of work, but if they wanted to put together some type of an event in town or something else, you know, tour or whatever, on one of those days, we will announce and advertise it at the, at the airshow and hopefully have some people come and experience more, more Berkeley County.
Or the evening of, I mean, I assume the airshow is day during the day.
Right.
And the evenings will be free for the visitors to attend something else.
Yeah, we're going to do, we'll, we'll have a sponsorship reception for all of our sponsorship things on that, on that Saturday evening. Of course, you all will be getting a bit of that. It's usually a lot of fun. All the performers come to that. It's a, it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good event. But I know in, I was at another airshow out in Illinois and they actually had a, oh, some kind of a restaurant night that they did after the, after the airshow. Actually, they did it each day. So every, like the first day, they were announcing the restaurants that were part of that. Then the second day, they announced the winner of some sort of a contest they had going on the night before at the restaurants and had something else going on that evening. And it apparently drove quite a bit of traffic into, into town there. So we're, we're always looking for opportunities to do something like that. And we did, we have a national food vendor. I opted for that for the airshow. We have tried to do individual food vendors to an event that large and it is virtually impossible to get, to have that run smooth. It's just very, very difficult to do. So the, the positive about the national vendor is that the, when the national vendor has all these booths and we did, we've done this before. And so if you have a, if you have a nonprofit or if you have, you know, a kids' basketball team or whatever and they want to, want to make some money, they'd be able to come out and say, okay, we're going to take the cotton candy booth. Okay, we're going to take the hot dog booth or whichever one they're going to do. And they have to have a certain number of people there all the time each day. But the, the national vendor then gives them ten percent of gross as their payment and we're going to guarantee it with a certain amount of money per, per head. So if they, you know, if, if, let's just say that, that you got somebody doing snow cones and it's going to take four of them all day and they say, we'll give you ten percent, but ten percent ends up only being, you know, two, three hundred bucks or something. We will do some sort of, and we don't have this number yet, but you know, somewhere in the neighborhood, you know, we'll, we'll guarantee them a hundred bucks per head for whatever that is. So if they don't make it, they don't get that ten percent, we will subsidize whatever they get. So it'll be, it'll be a good opportunity for, you know, for community organizations to be involved. They seemed to like that last time and of course, there's also, there's a hundred other, other ways that, that folks can volunteer and make money as an organization if they'd like to do that there.
No luck.
Steve, you all, Parks Direct, you all helped with the garbage one year.
Yeah.
And I, that was a lot of work.
I don't know what we got, but it wasn't worth it.
I saw poor Steve out there just.
Wasn't involved in it.
Oh, he was humping it, man. He was working hard.
All right, Nick. Thank you for coming in and doing your presentation and keep, keep getting it. There's a lot of good things happening out there.
Well, we very, very much appreciate the support we have had from the Berkeley County Council and we are proud to do, do our part to, to support and represent our community and we certainly appreciate anything you can do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Next up, Michelle Suddith with the Executive Director of CASA of the Panhandle.
No, sir. They think they may have a couple of resident children.
I've seen, I've seen those popping in now.
Yes, right. He's at home.
Thank you. How you doing?
Thank you, council members, for having me today. I'm Michelle Suddith. I'm the Executive Director of CASA of the Eastern Panhandle. As maybe many of you know, CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates. We help really become the voice and the advocate for children who are before the courts due to abuse and neglect. There are almost eight hundred children before the courts due to abuse and neglect across our three counties. Of course, Berkeley County, being the largest county, has the majority of the children in this case. As you all are very aware of, it has never been harder out there to take care of these kids and be the eyes and the ears of kids, especially with the DHR challenges. Sometimes it is a CASA volunteer who is the only person who sees this child in between here. So CASA was started by a judge in Seattle who said he couldn't sleep at night because he was asked to make these life-changing decisions on a child's well-being without having all the data. So he came up with this idea that how about we get a bunch of community volunteers, train them up, assign them to the case and let them be a partner with that child and a voice of the child in the courtroom. This was in nineteen seventy. Now there are about a thousand CASA programs across the state. We have ten in West Virginia, so we're a really great network of providers across the state. And our judges really depend on the work, passion and heart that our volunteers bring to these cases. I'm not going to flip you through all of this, but on page three, it kind of talks a little bit about our model at the bottom and what a good investment, a public investment this is. So for every one staff person, we supervise thirty volunteers. Those thirty five volunteers can serve on average seventy five kids. Now, the complexity of the cases, some of these cases last over two years. I think that's probably the majority. You can see what a commitment that is for volunteers. So of course, our hardest job is recruiting, retaining and training and supervising these volunteers. And this is where the heart of all the work from a staffing perspective comes into play. On the next page, talks about our outcomes. Our kids are half as likely to re-enter foster care, meaning if they have an advocate by their side, the placement's going to be right. They also on average spend three months less in foster care. And if you think about the numbers, if it's six thousand a month to put a child in foster care, if we could take three months off of it, times three hundred, I don't know, what is that, five million dollars? So we are a good investment in terms of a public good and what we offer. And you can't even put a value on the impact that these volunteers have on the life of a child. I'm going to have my colleague Mel talk a little bit more about what it's like to interact with the kids and be in the courtroom. So on page five, this, I'm going to kind of bring this home. At the center chart tells you that we have eight hundred kids before the court and currently we are only serving half. So we really are on a fundraising bandwagon to try to increase our. So we really are on a fundraising bandwagon to try to increase our funds, to hire more staff, to supervise volunteers, to train them up, but importantly, to recruit them. Finding the right volunteer who can do this work and put them through the 35 hours of training and have them dedicate 40 hours a month to this work is, you know, kind of a strong ask. And I wish all of you get to know a CASA volunteer because they're amazing people. So call me if you know someone who would be great. And the other chart on the bottom, you could see the numbers of abuse and neglect cases that were opened in 2022 versus 2021. And you could also see that the number's lower. I want to assure you that we have not solved the problem of the opioid epidemic. We have not solved the problem of abuse and neglect. We just don't have enough CPS workers. So there are a lot of kids in harm's way that needed attention. What is, what that means for CASA is we're starting to work closely with kids who are not yet in abuse and neglect cases, but we're trying to intervene in schools. And I think some of my colleagues are working more closely in that area. And we have a new partnership with the Martinsburg Initiative, trying to work more in education advocacy in the schools to touch some of these kids that are on the cusp of the court case. I also mentioned on the right-hand side a couple great programs that we've come up with over the last few years. One is Fostering Futures. What that means is that we are prioritizing kids 13 and over to work with them and assign them a mentor and be an advocate for permanency for these kids. And most importantly, help them transition to adulthood. At 18, they are emancipated from the system. So we can tell you at 13, 14, 15, these kids are not gonna find permanency. So what we do through our intense training of our volunteers and the work of our staff is really make sure that these kids have the life skills, the resources, and are connected, connected to a lot of public resources that they can have access to before they're officially emancipated. So this has been extremely successful. We run a leadership camp in the summer with Shepherd University. We've helped a lot of kids kind of make that initial transition. And this isn't hard stuff. I mean, one of the kids, it was about teaching him how to shave. So this is, you know, pretty life-changing work and heartfelt work that our volunteers do every day with these kids. But Fostering Futures is one of them, and that's one where we're asking for funds to help build that program up and find more volunteers who are interested in working with the 13 and over group. As I mentioned, we now have a new education advocate who's working with the Martinsburg Initiative, which is a great organization, and we're happy to be partnering with them. We also have a new parent advocate, which could be a conflict of interest in some cases, but we really feel that parents who have lost their child for whatever reason need, need their own advocacy to make sure that they show up for court dates, that they know the phone numbers to call, that they have transportation where they need to be. And sometimes it's just a matter of having a person hand them a planner and say, we'll text you and make sure you have a ride. And that can make all the difference for the life of that child in the end, at the end of the day. So it's something that we're experimenting with and wanna see how it evolves. So that's like a 5,000-foot description of CASA and what we do. I thought it would be really fun to hear from an advocate. Well, Melody went from being an advocate to then being an employee, and she's just one of our amazing people who do so much in the community. So Mel, I hope you can take it home for landing.
Sure. So like Michelle said, I started as a volunteer. I left healthcare. I was in healthcare for over 25 years, so. And changed completely to join CASA. And it has been very rewarding. I will tell you, in a nutshell, what CASA does is we are the eyes and the ears for the judge. So we visit with the children and we advocate in their best interests. It may not always be in line with the DHHR. It may not always be in line with the Guardian and Light'em, but we are taking what the child has asked us. And I just wanna tell you a quick story about a recent case that we had where a mother pulled a gun on her child. And, you know, a lot of times, kids wanna be reunited with their parents despite everything that's happened because that's what they know. That's, that's all they know, is their parents. But these children in this case, that wasn't the case. They were scared. And they, they put their hands together and said, please, please, please tell the judge to let us stay with our aunt. And we talked to the children, and we said, why do you think mom did that? You know, we wanna know, do they understand that sometimes people have mental health issues? And maybe mom was having a bad day. And one of the little girls said, I guess because she doesn't have a big, very big heart. And so that completely ripped my heart out and made for our advocacy for these children to be placed with their aunt. And, you know, our, our goal most of the time is to reunite with parents, parents who can get it together, right? But in, in some cases, that's not, not in the best interest of the children. And so in this particular case, the kids got what they wanted, and they got to stay with their aunt, and they will be safe. And that, that's our goal, is just to make sure kids grow up and have safe, safe and healthy lives. And, you know, it should tell you a lot if, if you knew where I came from. I was an executive in healthcare, and then I went to join CASA. And it's just a, such a change, not just for me career-wise, but such a rewarding thing. So I can't speak enough about the importance of having a CASA. And like Michelle said, we need more volunteers. We need, that, right now, our DHHR numbers are horrible. I think we are seven, minus 70% of the employees that we need for DHHR. So CASAs are picking up a lot of that work that's not getting done by CPS. Not, no fault of their own. You know, they just don't have the staffing. But I think they are relying more heavily on us as well. So we just appreciate you guys listening to us, and hopefully you understand the goal of CASA and, and our heartfelt dream for these children to have safe lives. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for coming in. And, you know, I've been up here the last couple of years when you've made your presentation, and it, you kind of pull at us a little bit.
That's what I'm hoping.
Because no, nobody wants to see a child mistreated or, or hurt or anything else. So thank you for what you do. And I would think that probably during the height of COVID, your, your numbers probably increased because parents were home. And sometimes that's maybe the only time that a child felt safe is when their parents were at work or at house. I don't know.
But actually, I was, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, our numbers decreased with COVID because we had not very many people reporting because schools were not in session. So the people who have eyes on the children at all times were not making those reports.
No, they, it went up.
Yeah, so it went up afterwards.
So it went up 20% from 2020 to 21. It went up 20%. And that was without seeing mandated reporters. So we thought that was, you know, it's an interesting comment because some areas did not see an increase for exactly the same reason. No one had eyes on the kids. But for some reason, in 2021, I guess it's.
And of course, our numbers are down now because we, we don't have, you know, regular. We'd no sooner get a DHHR worker and then they leave, and it's just this constant turnover. So it's really challenging.
So just for some perspective, they get over 200 calls a month for suspected abuse and neglect. So you can just see that none of these cases are being investigated. No one's going to visit the home. If you talk to some of the teachers in the schools, they, you know, are banging their head against the wall saying, I can't believe no one's gone to visit this family, you know? So there's a problem there. There's a problem once they get in before, before the courts. It's, it's really just a challenging day every day.
And, and your services, you know, are no different than the rest of the services that are out there. As our population continues to increase, so will your needs.
Yeah, that's for sure. Sadly.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or?
We appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
More, more experience than I. No, but thanks for your time, and I thank my very actively engaged board that decided to, that were able to come today to talk about parks and recreation and support all the good work that's going on there. As I've mentioned before, I've been engaged in a lot of parks and recreation agencies. And I will say that this board is probably the most engaged that I've ever worked with, that wants to be good in this community. First off, just thank, we have today Justin Henry, owner of Board Members, who's also our Finance Chair. I've got those, Olin, Roger Henley, all Board Members as well, and Teresa Bennett is our CFO.
Roger's back there now as well.
Yeah, I thought I saw he's back in there as well. But thank you, council members. Mr. Davis, appreciate the time to go through our budget presentation today. I believe everybody received the packet that we presented, and I'll just quickly skim through that. Take it word for word and certainly answer any questions. This past fiscal year has been an exciting one for us. We were able to work through and we adopted our master plan. That is quite a big deal. The previous year, we went through and developed and adopted our treaty. It's both in conjunction with facilitation by Michael Baker International. And all that's up on the website. We've got a public presentation tomorrow. And we've certainly been sharing a lot to the community about what this means. With that, we had two design workshops that were part of the scope. Obviously, we have more sites, but we had in the scope two design workshops. One was with regarding Poorhouse, and the other one was regarding a new linear connection in War Memorial Lake Thomas scale. The Poorhouse one was important because the county added seven acres to the property, now pushing it up over 200 acres. Definitely a lot of acreage along with Tuscaloosa, and a lot of great opportunity there. So if you get a chance, I mean, I can come back and talk about that in a future time or answering individual questions. But we're real excited about what's going on there and just what the potential is. The master plan documented a lot of details about the county, the growth of the county's city, both in population and in opportunities. And we wanna make sure that, because now we have this plan, we can go after some additional funding from different locations, foundations, whatever, to help support some of these, so that we're ready for the increased population, which you're talking about, you know? As the population grows, services are growing, so we certainly wanted to do that. This past year, we completed the, at a Poorhouse, we completed the new small pavilion. We're gonna be dedicating that this spring with the garnt. Like I mentioned, the land purchase has been completed, and we're, in fact, this week started cutting new trails around the middle area. About two miles of trails on either side of the streams that's going through there. Last year, we also installed a new hardwood floor and lighting in the barn, which is well-received. And it made some improvements in the disc golf thanks to a lot of volunteers that were very helpful in that process. Certainly, other projects around, the new State Farm Pavilion went up. We dedicated, we stored and dedicated the Dead Boy Monument at a War Memorial Park. Berkeley saw the replacement of five HVAC units. We asked for support to put a new cool liner at the Lambert Pool and certainly working on security around the rec center. We've been improving other parks like MLK, trying to do more with community programming. Operational Pool this past year was a brand-new program. It had sold 150 people participate in that. That was a pretty good first-time event. So there's a lot going on. We also established, formally established and have everything set up for our Friends of Parks and Recreation. You may have heard about that before, but all the state federal paperwork's been signed. We're meeting as a Friends Group Board and even the bank account's set up. So we're receiving donations at this point, and that's getting off the ground. I think, as far as funding sources, this past year, we certainly thank the county and others that have supported the efforts of Parks and Recreation in Berkeley County. I think we do, well, we've got a great legacy here, and we continue to have generated revenue in the area of 60% of our budget. The national average through National Recreation and Parks Association is 23%, so way more than double that. And I think that allows us to best utilize local funding. And again, that's, that's exceptional for any area, but I think it's special for our area. We've received, thanks to County Council, we received $350,000 for the Spring Mills Park project. That project is out to bid right now, and it may be open this Friday, the 9th. We've had some contractors that have contacted us to get that off the ground and maybe do a groundbreaking here yet this spring. County Council also gave us $128,000 for the nature playground at Poorhouse, and that's the finalizing design for that right now. We have cleared the space for that. In the city of Martinsburg, through the recovery grant program, we've received $467,000. And we've completed several, many of those projects. We just have two of those projects left, that being a pickleball court to some purposes. And we continue to receive grants. We have already received a lab grant for the summer concert series this summer, and we received a Nissan grant for Nissan equivalent Nissan scholarships. So we, we do a lot continuously with sponsors and donors, and we thank the community for that, that work and that activity has really helped us stretch our dollars to provide more and more services. As, as we said, the next coming year, we've got Spring Mills Park coming on. We've got some work happening at Dupont, and we're planning on some brush clearing, remove the school's pond grid and on-site preparation for some new development there potentially. I know that you all are talking with folks about the Inwood Park design, and we thank you for including us in those conversations and working with the city on potential funding for, like, trails over the Lake Thomas. As we make those connections for Oatsdale and War Memorial. There's a lot going on. I get, you know, a lot of details certainly that we could certainly get into. We continue to, rather than just go over verbatim, I know there may be some questions I can answer specifically or talk about. Also, the Board Members behind me can speak more to that as well, about the impact that we've had. During the year, we've served as a key engineer, I think we've made a number of, we have 30,000 people that we've served in different programs or rental programs. Even the Dog Park has seen about 900 people registered for that. And that makes that program, that area more self-sufficient. At this time, if you have any specific questions about our program or what we're requesting, we certainly have to answer that with your staff and Board Members.
I get a lot of, hear a lot of concern about the Lambert Pool. What was the plan there moving forward, and is there improvements need to be done? Or did problems with finance, staffing, or?
If you were listening to social media this past summer, it was 99% false. The pool will not close. It did open five days later. It's the War Memorial Pool. It was closed for a day and a half due to what I call old car syndrome. Sometimes you take your car to the shop to get repaired, and we have it shut down in the public park room. But it ran the rest of the summer. We do function it differently in August. I mean, it just restricted me to parties due to the fact that most of my lifetimes come back to college. And it's, the national life very short in Israel. We were fortunate to have enough for the Jordan season, but they end the season. That's typical. It's happened for many years. Where the, actually, the usage goes down in August anyway. People get last minute vacation to go back to high school.
So the whole month of August, it's just private events?
It mostly private events. We still continue the seniors' events daily. And, yeah, it's mainly just private events toward.
What's the hours of operation there?
We typically have, sometimes we'll have morning events that we start at eight o'clock. The seniors from Valley Park from 1:00 to 12:00, and then the rest of the day is available for parties. In the, before August 1, we have it from 12:00 to 6:00. And we put a new cool liner in this year. That was about $110,000 invested that was gonna be made in that project. And it's holding up well. We do have some hydraulic issues underneath the pool. The ground by right now, we can just see water in it. That's the, we're getting there to keep the underground water from bubbling up. It seems to be holding very well, and it's very warm.
That's something new, right? That used to be a concrete pool, right?
It's still concrete underneath there. It's just the fact. It's just the fact that we just, every so often, you have to put a liner in or do something, whether you, like some pools, they all start with concrete, and some will put plaster up, some will put PVCs, you know, a lot of different products, but you always have to replace them. Chemicals are very harsh on liners.
Yeah. I see a lot of good things going on for new parks, new things.
Yeah, we're, like I said, in the master planning process that we're building on a great legacy, it grows.
How much use does it go any given part do?
We don't track that. We have no way of knowing how many door, times a door opens and stuff like that. It's not used as much as it could be, although I know that the times I've been up there, past year and a half, that I've seen slowly increasing numbers of people, especially if they're, you know, Worksburg out here in Ambrose and town, it's pretty busy at times.
Are those the only two parks you have?
Only two dog parks we have currently.
Any plans for more?
Yes. I think we've had some initial discussion with all the townhomes going up next to Dupont, there might be a very good opportunity for putting something up there. I think there'd be a high interest in that. And I believe the Inwood concept of park as a dog park, you know, all of that. So I think we'll see that in the future, and, you know, other areas have dog parks that are free, return to nominal fee, $10 dog, maybe so much for the first year. And that money helps us sustain. Elements in the grass that are in that.
How much, of course, you probably don't know because it isn't there yet, but the addition of the Inwood Park and some of these others.
Yeah, we're looking at additional staff and supplies to maintain those parks. And I'm trying to, based on what we have knowledge of now, what the potential cost could be as far as, you know, making the staff, programming staff, supplies, like simple things like wallpaper covering. We have those, those costs that are going to increase. We also have other opportunities for additional revenue too, because we're at two billion with the Spring Mills, several at Inwood that potentially could be returned, a million rental as well to help offset some of those costs, which we've always looked at monetizing as much as we could to offset the cost and keep as much generated revenue as possible.
Steve?
I just want to say to the board members here, Roger has been on the park board for how many years, Roger?
Maybe 37.
I knew it was a lot, but I didn't think it was that many. And Buzz, Buzz has been on there since eight. Yeah, he's got you because when we took over, the park system took over when we were a park in 1987, Buzz got on the board then. And it took us five years to gain to understand there's more parks than just War Memorial, but we finally got beyond that. And then Justin's one of the newer members. He's appointed by the school board, Buzz and Roger, both city appointees. And Justin, of course, his dad, Alan, over the years, they've been some great contributors to our community, and they don't seek recognition, so a lot of people don't know that. When the soccer complex was built, they paid for the whole irrigation system that was put in there. They built the question arena at the Poorhouse Farm, free, gratis, material, labor, everything. And now, you know, they're getting ready to invest another $120,000 down in the Dupont to maybe pave the road and get the road system that's always been a maintenance headache improved too. So really, I wish he'd have got on the board about 10 years ago instead of just recently. And Teresa has been with Parks and Rec now 17, and she's a financial whiz, and she kept us out of trouble for a long time, Bob, and hopefully she'll do the same.
Continues to be amazing, so.
But I think our greatest challenge as a, as a county now, and as a commission, council, whatever we're called, is post-COVID now. We've gotten, the only good thing that came out of COVID was all these funds that came down to government. And because of that, it had, we have really a lot of new things happening in our public park system that wouldn't have happened probably without the COVID funds. So our challenge now that those funds are gone is how are we going to keep the momentum going? You know, to, to keep it rolling because we were way behind, and we're still behind. And as the county keeps going, we're going to continue to be behind. So it's going to be a challenge for us, but hopefully we can work together and create ways to. And then obviously, as you brought up, Jim, the big thing is you can't keep putting the burden of new parks on us, on the board without providing the, the worst thing you do is build things and not take care of them.
Yeah, I'm well aware of that, and I was just trying to see what he's doing to get into that. And the plan, planning is going.
He's already started. We had a conversation.
Recently.
Well, you'd think recently, but it's been several months.
It has been, yeah.
About preparing a budget for the additional maintenance and upkeep of the parks. So that's, he's, he's already working on that. But, you know, once again, Bob, you know, thank you all for what you do. I know, I know that you've got a great board there. Like you say, they are very engaged, they're, they're committed, and that's, that's what it takes to have a good park system or, or whatever kind of program you're running. You've got to have folks who are committed and, and want to see good things happen. So thank you for what you do. If you would tomorrow.
Yes.
Call me, call me sometime at your convenience. All right? And it's in reference to your dog park. All right?
Because the council will allow, as you know, you're typically historically, your funding to Parks and Rec has been half of the hotel motel tax, which is that half of the money, which is discretionary. And as far as the 18 years I've been here, you've always dedicated that to the Parks Department. You also make a contribution out of the general fund, and then you try to provide some, some capital improvements support. And then every once in a while, something will come up, and it's typically been out at Poorhouse where a storm comes through and takes the roof off the Alm's house and things like that. And the council has stepped, stepped up and helped with some of those unexpected capital projects that were needed. But Parks and Rec, just like many, many of our other agencies, we provide IT support at a pretty, you know, pretty competitive, I would say discounted rate. And next, this coming Thursday, on your consent agenda, you'll see two requests for waiver permit fees. One for, I think it's, yeah, Spring Mills Park as well as the Dupont. So you typically waive the, the permit fees for that, which makes sense because, you know, you provide the funding anyway. So I think it's been a good partnership over the years. They certainly have, I think, have been good stewards of your, of your monies. And you continue to invest in the park system, 22 acres down in Inwood as well as the 70 cup acres in Spring Mills. We just need to figure out what we're going to do to support this fairness.
The hotel motel tax, and I've made several board members aware of this, it's, it's, there's a new bill been introduced in Charleston that they're talking about, but it does not affect the funding that can be used for parks, public parks. So in fact, anything, we're actually advocating and supporting the bill because it, it could help us maybe even to fund more money in the future, so for the park system if it works out, so. But that has been, that's truly been the saving grace of our park system over the years, been the hotel motel tax. Let's be honest about it.
The bill actually gives for change, controls the money, the local dollars that are generated, gives the council more discretion in how that, how that money is used, which is unusual.
Two questions. When we spoke with CBB the other day, he had numbers to this point in the year and expected numbers. That would make this number look a little low, correct?
Now, yes. Historically, the CBB is always high. The Parks and Rec Department is very conservative in their projections, and I think they've always taken the approach that I do, you know, be conservative, you know, put a number out there that you're pretty confident you're going to hit, and then hope that you're going to exceed that. What we have done in the past is we usually budget somewhere in between, knowing that they're, they're probably ultra-conservative and knowing that CBB is probably a little bit too optimistic. It's going to be somewhere in the middle. So it, you know, I think the.
Is there a estimate to hit a million dollars over there?
Well, a million dollars between, yeah, between to be distributed amongst the two, yeah.
All two amongst the two?
Yeah. So it was 500 for the CBB, 500 for parks.
Okay.
And.
And that doesn't include the city's hotel tax. That's just the county's share.
So they were projecting 500, Parks is projecting 350. I think probably 400 is going to be a pretty good, that's a pretty good number.
You'll see how conservative you is in a couple of weeks.
Yes, I am. I don't want to see any of you end up in jail despite your best efforts.
Okay, anybody else? Bob, thanks for coming in.
Did any of the board members want to say anything that wanted to help?
I know Teresa's just, I know Teresa's just dying to say something.
She was hoping you'd say that, right? No, I thank them for all their hard work on behalf of Parks to help us move forward. And I sort of thank again the council staff for supporting us all these years, and in the future to help us be prepared for the pandemic that's coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you for being here.
Thank you very much.
It's interesting, none of the county members are here. Two city and one school.
Who's on that board from the county?
Come on up. Chris Jones.
You don't have to.
Did you get called Travis this morning?
Yes.
Okay. Did you get one?
I've had about five or six from you in the last couple of days. That's why I asked Bob to give me a call. Amy, you ready to go?
Yeah.
All right. Let's have Amy Serball with the supervisor of Children's Home Society. Welcome.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
If not, you'll talk. Good afternoon. My name is Amy Serball. I'm the regional director of Children's Home Society, and I supervise Safe Haven Child Advocacy Center. I know that most of you are familiar with the work that we do at Safe Haven, but I'll give an overview for new members. Safe Haven Child Advocacy Center's mission is to promote the team approach to the investigation of child abuse and neglect cases. We work as a team to provide a safe place for children to come to our center to tell their story of victimization. When I say that we work as a team, we invite all investigative members to come to watch a child make their disclosure in a private room. The purpose of that is to minimize the number of times that a child has to tell their story, but also to preserve their statement for the investigation process. So when a child comes to our site, they are accompanied by a safe caregiver. A safe caregiver is somebody who's never been accused of victimizing them. That can be a parent, a grandparent, or oftentimes it's somebody who is a foster parent or a kinship relative. The child is then greeted by our family advocate, and they go into our waiting room, and a forensic interviewer comes out. Our forensic interviewers are nationally certified to provide a legally sound interview. The child and the interviewer go into our interview room, and on the other side of that room is a two-way mirror, and our investigative team members, which are law enforcement typically, Child Protective Services, are observing that interview as it happens. The interviewer gets the story of the child, and then takes a break to check in with our investigators to ask any follow-up questions. At that point, the interviewer will re-enter the room and finish the interview. Every child that we see gets screened for body safety questions and screened for all types of trauma, including substance abuse, domestic violence, physical violence, and whatever else there may be that we know the child is there. But those are the three categories that we talk to every child about. We also talk about body safety planning for the child before they leave. So after that initial interview, our advocate follows that family from that day moving forward until they no longer need us in their life. The advocate is going to court with them, they're helping file protective orders, they're helping connect to services such as putting work for local health services, which we also provide in-house, and they're preparing that child to testify when their criminal trial finally comes up, charges are quiet. So the Safe Haven Child Advocacy Center has grown substantially since we've been open in 2006. Since that time, we've served, we've served over 4,000 children. In the past five years, we have, I'm sorry, since the past five years, we've seen a 67.65 increase in the number of children that we're serving. In the last fiscal year, we saw 342 new children at our site, but provided 349 forensic interviews for those children. 70% of the children that we saw did disclose abuse, and 58 of those children that we saw received therapy services in-house in that fiscal year of 2122. What's specific to Berkeley County is that 58% of the children that we saw were Berkeley County residents. So we serve Berkeley, Morgan, and Jefferson, but predominantly the children that we're serving are Berkeley County. Last year, charges were filed in 55 of the cases that we saw. Now, not all of them have gone to indictment yet, but we saw 28 convictions either through a plea deal or through a jury trial. This year, we are asking the Berkeley County Council to fund us with $5,000, which is a 1% ask of our budget. Our current budget is $463,070. And that is consistent with what we have asked the Berkeley County Board to, I'm sorry, Berkeley County Council to fund us in the past. The last thing that I want to share with you before we get to questions is that the use of a CAC in an investigation saves the county on average $1,000 per investigation because it is a coordinated approach, and we have relationships with all investigators. Municipalities, Orangeville Police Department, West Virginia State Police, Berkeley County Sheriff's Office, Child Protective Services, as well as federal agents here. We work with the Department of Homeland Security and the FBI. In addition, we work closely with the prosecuting attorney's office as well as Berkeley Medical Center, Dr. St. Medical Center, and Manchester Medical Centers, and get our children to the forensic nursing program if needed.
Are you ready for a few questions?
I am.
HD, you got anything?
Who's your main funding source?
Our main funding source for the Child Advocacy Center is grant funding through the Victims of Crime Compensation application that funds our staff person salaries. And then we also have funding from the Department of Criminal Justice, Community Services.
Thank you for maintaining the $5,000 balance here for past several years. Go ahead. Yeah, since 2021, and actually, previous to that, it was $5,000. No need to increase it, or you got pretty steady?
We have seen an increase in, with our funding that does cover our, our staff person salaries. We have a great relationship in the community, so we do a lot of fundraising to offset other costs. You know, oftentimes, we serve children and families with their basic needs items too, so we can apply fundraising costs to that. We have seen an increase in children, so our, that, that allows for our increase in funding support.
I was wondering how the program was, you know, especially after COVID.
Yeah, we saw a certain deficit with COVID, but we did take advantage of applying for the American Rescue Plan funds that the family set out, and we were beneficiary of that. We're also always looking for new funding opportunities and are pretty creative with that. So we also receive grant funding from the city council as well as many grants within the area, many of the mini grants. But we, if increases are possible, we could certainly put that money to use in our project. We have been very fortunate. We are part of an umbrella agency with Children's Home Society, so when we have a child that has a name, they always say yes to us, and we. And we do a fundraiser, move money around from other programs if there's an oversight to make it work for our kids.
Mr. Cal? So most of your referrals are from law enforcement or from where?
Yes, sir, we receive, we can only receive referrals for forensic interviewing from law enforcement, Child Protective Services, or the prosecuting attorney's office. Occasionally, we will get court-ordered referrals for interviewing.
If someone that's a teacher in the school system suspects that there's some issues going on, who do they contact?
They would contact the CPS hotline. Oftentimes, they still will contact us and will help them connect them to the hotline.
To the right person?
Yes, sir. We also work closely with the CID, with Berkeley County Sheriff's Office, or with the Friends Against Children Unit with the State Police. So if they're calling us, we try to give them that direct number just to kind of get them, get their concern for faster, whether they're going through a night shift deputy that isn't quite sure what to do with one of those cases or might not have the opportunity to get out there at school time and see a child.
Do you work with the DHHR then as well, or assume?
Yes, sir. We do, we work with them very closely. We try to be super supportive because they are experiencing crisis right now.
Yeah.
So we, and I've invited Mr. Voice with me today, he's an assistant prosecuting attorney. What we were just discussing is that oftentimes, our abuse and neglect proceedings in circuit court, the evidence of our forensic interviews are the most evidence that we have now. So when those cases are coming to adjudication, our forensic interviewers are providing testimony to meet the burden and to prove to the court that abuse and neglect has happened from the statements that were referring with the children.
I had some notes and it's been covered, the questions I had, you know, I was wondering about DHHR, how much it evolved. I wonder if you participated with the school system. And obviously, you've seen increases because a sixty-seven percent increase, which is significant. So unfortunately, I think that as our population grows, you know, so will your services, the need of your services will grow with us, you know. So what happens to the child then?
So typically, if there is imminent danger that exists, CPS will remove right away.
Say that again.
CPS will remove right away. We do not have the authority to make that decision, but we do carry some weight and influence in that. We try to not interview children if it is by a parent, if the suspected abuse is by a parent unless CPS is on our premises. Oftentimes, as you can imagine, that can be difficult. So we have made an arrangement with CPS that instead of us needing to call the hotline if there's an emergency, that we feel a child needs to be removed right away, we have all of the supervisors' cell phone numbers that we can call them directly and they'll send a work order to us.
And where does the child go, is my question?
The child will go, CPS determines the most appropriate placement for them. Typically, it's kinship relative or foster care. In our agency of Children's Home Society, which Safe Haven is just a program, we currently have seventy-two licensed foster care homes in the Eastern Panhandle.
Do you happen to know how many children in this county are waiting on foster care?
Are waiting on foster care?
Yeah, they're... I remember hearing from the state that there were seven, there were seven thousand children in our foster care system. And I was just wondering if there are any children who just, you know, haven't found a home? Or, or is that not the case?
There are children that are looking for homes. In Berkeley County, we do not currently have any children that are in like a motel, hotel. We strive really hard to avoid that in the Eastern Panhandle. There are some children that don't have foster care homes that may be in a shelter placement. We have seven shelters across the state that children can be placed in. Those mostly where you see teenagers placed. We don't have, unfortunately, a lot of teenage foster homes or foster homes that will place teenagers. But in Berkeley County, I'm not aware of any children that are without a home at this moment.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, you know, unfortunately, we have to have your services, but thank you for what you do. It has to be very difficult.
Thank you, thank you so much for your time and your consideration. If you don't mind, I will invite Mr. Voice to sit.
Sure, please do.
Afternoon. So my name is Ray Voice and Ms. Serball indicated I am a felony prosecutor here in Berkeley County. I was prosecutor for two years or so in Oregon County. Actually, I met Ms. Serball when I've been here for the last five. And basically, I'm here because Ms. Delegati is tied up in a murder trial that got underway yesterday. And she basically just asked me to come here to be a voice of support for everything that Amy just documented that they do. It's difficult to overstate how critical they are in, basically, from every, every stage in the process, whether it's from the initial investigative phase and bringing them in and having the Child Advocacy Center interviews and CAC interviews she referenced, all the way through criminal trial and assisting, as she indicated, preparing the children to testify if need be. There's a statutory provision that says, well, if it's too, if a doctor finds it too traumatic for this child to testify in open court and in proximity to the perpetrator, they can testify through circuit, closed-circuit TV and other setting, and they are often integral in making sure that we have those necessary evaluations done to satisfy the law. And I myself have done that in a child rape case. They often want them, Ms. Serball did not mention, is in cases such as child abuses, whether they be physical or sexual in nature, often some of her personnel will be qualified as experts. There are therapists that work in conjunction with Ms. Serball and all her folks. And they have, in certain cases, been qualified as experts who can opine as to certain things such as, well, this child is exhibiting some phenology consistent with PTSD that you'd expect to find in a child sex victim. That the child's been consistent in exposures, so on and so forth. There's case law that dictates exactly what it is they can say, but those are certainly some of the things that are permitted to say. And so they offer free expert witness testimony or expert services, if you will, at a trial. Sometimes their expertise will be enough to, in and of itself, result in a plea coming from the defendant. So also, there's the abuse and neglect side of things, where basically the paramount concern or consideration of the court is, well, what's gonna happen with this child vis-à-vis the parents and criminal rights, whether they're terminated, if they're unified, how, so on and so forth. And with the reality that is the staffing shortage at DHHR and CPS, as Ms. Serball indicated, in a lot of cases nowadays, it's the interviews that they've provided take place of what would have previously been a thorough CPS investigation. So really, they've gained importance in recent years. And so I could go on and on about what it is they do and how critical they are to prosecution of all variety of crimes. I mean, actually, one of the ways in which I think Ms. Serball sold herself short was, she said that they're more or less involved in cases in which the child has been abused and neglected, and that's true, but they're also involved in other cases in which, can be, in which, say, there was violence in the home toward a spouse and the child happened to witness it. The child wasn't directly harmed, but is nevertheless a critical witness as it relates to, say, attempted murder or something of that nature, an actual murder. And they are qualified through their training to elicit that testimony or that eyewitness account from these children. And frankly, they, they do what a lot of uniform officers aren't equipped to do. You know, it's one thing to get into foot pursuits and vehicle pursuits and do controlled dives and so on and so forth. It's another thing to talk to a child and say, you know, without any sort of coaching and interview whatsoever, tell me how you were victimized. And that's what they specialize in doing. And frankly, in many cases, without their services, I don't think they could see justice done. So as I indicated, Ms. Delegati asked me to come here and be a voice of support for their mission. She probably wouldn't want me asking this, but we're saying this. But I think five thousand dollars would be more than a fair ask, Ms. Serball.
Thank you, Mr. Voice. Anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Voice?
Are you finding more time involved as you go along with the Children's Home Society? Or do you work with in those cases?
I'm sorry, what, do I find more time?
Yeah, well, more time is demanded of you because of the increase from abuse and neglect.
I mean, you'd be surprised how many cases that you think are just strictly, say, a drug case or are just a crime of violence between, as I indicated, spouses. And in fact, it actually involves children. In some roundabout way, the children are there, what they saw might be important. The children and the mission of what the Children's Home Society, Safe Haven, what they all do, it probably, yes, it has become more a part of our job. And one other thing I forgot to mention is, and I think Ms. Serball did too, is that in the investigatory phase of things, we have a monthly, weekly? Monthly sort of roundtable, if you will. It's called the MDIT Multidisciplinary Investigative Team Meeting, where basically Amy and her folks will coordinate and we will see where it'll be, stakeholders around the board, prosecutor, representative, somebody from state police, the sheriff's office, city, every sort of law enforcement entity here. She referenced having a relationship with the various hospitals, forensic nurse examiners, and sex assault nurse examiners. They, we will sit around and talk about, okay, since last month, here are all the cases that involve children, whether they're abusive neglect, whether they're legitimate felony criminal cases, what have you. Where do they stand? What investigative tax could we use to best pursue justice in this case? For lack of a better phrase, we sit around once a month pow-wow. And then the next month, okay, well, here are new cases that have come in. What happened with the old ones? Where do these stand? And it's just a collaborative effort that she saw with spearheads that is really important for making sure that these kids don't fall through cracks.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your support. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
About fifteen minutes, I think, I think we'll recess and reconvene at four o'clock. We'll reconvene at four?
We're gonna take a break. It counts if you...
We're back in session. Let your record show there's nobody here from the public for public comment. Mr. Boenhart?
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to move to recess.
We are recessed. Thank you.
All right, and I'll leave there.